Attention, please, please. When we said we were having free food tonight, we didn't expect a crowd like this. I just heard from the fire marshal, so do not blame the messenger here. If you are standing up and you do not have a seat, you will have to leave the room. You will have to go out into the lobby. Does not mean you cannot speak tonight, but we have a fire limit code and that we are above that and we are now in a dangerous situation. And if anything were to happen and we did not do this, that would be a very bad thing. So if you do not have a seat, I need you to go out into the lobby, please. I'm gonna let, we need to let, do you want to bring us into the meeting? Is that all right? Mayor Kelly and I will be.
All right, we call this meeting to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Councilwoman Noel.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
By the hand for prayer, please. Dear Lord, in thy name we ask that you bless us, protect us, and guide us as we navigate through life. We know that you love us and your promises are true. So we give you all our cares and we know you will see us through. So when life seems difficult at best, help us to remember to pray and know that you will do the rest. These words we ask in thy name, amen.
Amen. All right, we'll have a special presentation by Mayor Tim Kelly and Chairman Darren Lempert.
All right. Well, thank you, members of council. Mayor Kelly, thank you for being here and all these great people who showed up for this special presentation. Yes. I want to share a story with you about human kindness, but going above and beyond. And I also want to thank our fire department. Chief Hyman, how many firefighters do we have that were on the scene on March 3rd when this incredible act of kindness took place?
I've got four of our crew members from Engine 12, Blue Shift.
Blue Shift, Engine 12, will you?
Chris Moore.
Very good. Will you raise your hands, gentlemen who are on the scene for this? We want to thank you too. And I'm glad to share. So it's an honor to be here today because we want to recognize a heroic action of Chattanooga's own Randy Haynes. On the morning of Friday, March 3rd, while Ms. Haynes stood outside the downtown Chattanooga Alliance office where she worked, she heard a woman scream from a nearby car. Her daughter was having a baby. Right then and there, Ms. Haynes sprung into action. Matter of fact, Ms. Haynes, will you come up and join us, please? Because we'd like to see you. A trained midwife, she ran to the car, pulled open the door to an in labor mother to a baby that was already crowning. Now, that's the part where I start screaming. But Randy, with no time to wait for an ambulance, coached the mother through labor, delivered a baby girl right there on Broad Street. This is such an incredible example of the extraordinary way that Chattanoogaans care for each other in times of crisis. It didn't matter that this woman was a stranger and that Ms. Haynes had nowhere to be or something that could have gone wrong that might have put her at risk. Ms. Haynes sprung into action and for that, mother and new baby girl were happy and healthy and you brought a wonderful new life into this world. Ms. Haynes, on behalf of the City of Chattanooga, thank you for your heroic service. Your calm and decisive actions brought new life into the world and your story will be an inspiration through generations. That's why I'm proud to proclaim tomorrow, March 22nd, as Randy Haynes Day in the City of Chattanooga. And I'd like to ask Mayor Kelly to work with me on reading the proclamation. Whereas Randy Haynes is the Operations Manager for the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance, nonprofit organization that keeps downtown Chattanooga safe, clean, and welcoming for all, whose staff serve as ambassadors for the city. And whereas on March 10th at 10:00 a.m., Ms. Haynes was outside her office preparing her team for cleanup. Efforts expected to commence after an expected storm cleared the area. And whereas, Ms. Haynes, who is also an experienced midwife, suddenly heard a frantic voice call for help from a nearby car and upon investigation discovered that the voice belonged to a woman who was in the final stage of labor and given the circumstances would be unable to make it to the hospital in time for the birth. And whereas, Ms. Haynes introduced herself, received permission from the mother to help, and guided the mother through the delivery process. And after the delivery, provided a sternum rub to stimulate the baby's breathing process, then placed the healthy baby girl on her mother's chest. Mayor Kelly?
And whereas, soon after, an ambulance arrived and took the mother and daughter to Earlanger where both were found to be in good health. And whereas, Haynes went home to clean up. And returned to work that same day to ensure that her team was safe ahead of the expected storm. After the storm passed, led her team's cleanup efforts, including reporting fallen traffic lights, removing debris, and preparing for the upcoming Chattanooga Marathon. And whereas, Haynes demonstrated responsible and heroic leadership in the face of multiple crises, showing dedication and pride in her work and should be recognized for going above and beyond the call of duty, serving as an example that all Chattanoogaans should follow. Now therefore, I, Tim Kelly, Mayor of the City of Chattanooga.
And the Chattanooga City Council.
Do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023 as Randy Haynes Day. Let me just say, and then I'll get out of your hair and turn things back over to the legislative body where the focus belongs today, that you are a shining example to the rest of Chattanooga and what we try to illustrate to people every day about the spirit of community. And we're really, really grateful for you and DCA for everything you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Would you like to say anything, Randy?
Um, yes.
Fantastic.
Yes.
My new motto is be a Randy.
It's hard to follow that one up. I want to say thank you to all of you for hosting me tonight. This is an absolute honor and just amazing. I'm still in disbelief, honestly. I also want to thank my dad, who's in the crowd, for raising me to be courageous and to love my neighbor. I want to thank my daughters. Without the two of you, I would have never found Midwifery. I want to thank Steve Brooks, our Executive Director, and my team who is out there waiting for me in the hallway. You guys are absolutely phenomenal. We get into all kinds of crazy things and now we got a reward for it, right? But ladies and gentlemen, I want you to know, these are your real heroes, your everyday heroes, out making downtown Chattanooga a desirable place to be, work, play, live. So I really appreciate you guys. Thank you again. I hope this story really speaks to community and everyone knows that you walk around heroes every single day and you're a hero within yourself.
Randy, that's awesome. Hey, the DCA, can we get, can we get your DCA members in? Will you bring your crew in real quick for us? We'd like to say hi to your DCA crew, our firefighters. And if we could get a, come on. And then if you are a family member or with Ms. Haynes, will you please send? I got to talk to these fabulous young ladies right here. I tell you what, they are, I know where you get it from. You got a great, great mom there. Come on, come on in, come on in.
That's my mom.
That's right, that is your mom. I'm behind you, Randy.
Oh, am I in a good spot?
You're the greatest. There we go. Yeah, I sit down time all the time, man. That's awesome. Thank you. Okay. Our lesson this evening, be a Randy. I like it. Our next list items for this evening is a special presentation, is a public hearing on the Chattanooga Climate Action Plan. The council had originally noticed that we would set 30 minutes. We may need a little more time. And two minutes per speaker, which we will adhere to. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for the Chattanooga Climate Action Plan. Pay attention real closely. Here's what I need you to do. There's a lot of people here. Our clerk and we have also folks recording in the back are taking very special notes. We need to hear your name clearly, what district of the city you live in, or your address, where you live. That's very important for our record keeping as we move forward in this process, this part of the public hearing process. So if you would like to speak, which I anticipate there will be one or two of you, then please start to line up. And then as we start to filter through, we will start to pull folks from the lobby so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Mr. IT, we will put two minutes on the timer for each speaker. Remember your name and your address and what city district you live in. Yes, sir. We are going to see where we are at in 30 minutes, which it will be 6:45, and then council can make that decision together.
For those that are speaking against the plan.
Counsel, you have heard a proposal by Councilman Henderson to allot 30 minutes for and 30 minutes against. What is your pleasure? All in favor of Councilman Henderson's proposal of 30 minutes for and 30 minutes against? All in favor, say aye. I hear one. I hear two. All those opposed? Unfortunately, we were elected and we have to vote. So it is, yeah. It's kind of between the nine of us. Let's see, the council, council, do you want to see where we are at in 30 minutes? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that's where we're going to see where we're at. All right, we're going to start this off. It is 6:15, 6:45, we will take another look at this. Yes, ma'am, please go ahead and we have two minutes on the timer, please, Mr.?
Good evening. I'm Carol Imers. I'm Regional Vice President for the Tennessee Valley Authority. So I'm here representing TBA. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the mayor's climate action plan. TBA was established 90 years ago to serve this region and the nation by developing innovative solutions to solve complex problems. That same purpose guides our work today. We recognize the need for affordable, reliable, resilient, and clean energy. We also recognize that there is no one answer to achieving the nation's decarbonization goals, which is why we are committed to developing all potential pathways to a clean energy future. Recently, TBA announced a Valley Pathways Study that will look at all segments of the valley economy and identify ways everyone, not just TBA and the power industry, can drive toward a sustainable, clean economy. We know this effort is broader than TBA, which is why we are supportive of the mayor's climate action plan and look forward to working side by side to help improve Chattanooga's quality of life and enable smart, clean, and sustainable growth that benefits all cities, all members of the city. We appreciate your leadership. We look forward to working with you together on this important effort and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Justin Granert, I'm the Vice President of Public Policy at the Chattanooga Chamber. My address is 23 Bellflower Circle in Chattanooga. There's a lot to this plan that falls within the chamber's economic development and quality of place efforts. We are certainly supportive of what the mayor is trying to do. Two key areas here that I think are of importance to the business community here in Chattanooga. Obviously, a robust transportation system is critical. When you look back at Velocity 2040, one of the key tenants of that long-range strategic plan was to get anywhere in this town in 20 minutes. Obviously, with the geographic region that we sit in, more roads are not necessarily the answer. So we have to be creative in how we get from point A to point B. And I think we look forward to working with you as we look at CARDA and other strategic transportation systems throughout our city to get workers to where the jobs are in our community. I think the other big piece obviously is growing the local economy. And one of the key areas that Tennessee and Chattanooga specifically is in line to lead on is the electric vehicle movement. You look at companies like Novonix that will be helpful in the battery space. You look at Volkswagen, their efforts in ID4. You look at around the state of Tennessee, obviously with Blue Oval City, the Nissan plant that's going in as well. This is a real opportunity for Chattanooga to lead and we think that preparing for these jobs in the green technology and energy sector are critically important. And Chattanooga needs to be the example to that. When we polled our members, 69% said that the city needs to invest more in electric charging stations to be an example for the rest of the state in this region. So we look forward to working with all of you and the mayor as he works to implement this plan. And that's what I have. Thank you all very much.
Well, your address was?
23 Bellflower Circle.
Bellflower Circle, that's District 6?
I think so. I just moved, so I have to.
District 6. Evening.
Yes. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hammett and I am here representing EPB. I serve as the Director of Residential Energy and Environmental Solutions. In addition, I'm a city resident in Councilman Jenny Hills, District, District 2. I am here to speak in support of the mayor's plan. EPB leadership has reviewed cap goals and is happy to support the city's plan. As you know, EPB's mission is to enhance our community's quality of life and support economic growth. In our day-to-day work, we are interacting with a growing number of local companies and recruitment prospects that are highly focused on the long-term value of resiliency and other elements of this plan, which help ensure the continuing sustainability of their day-to-day operations. In support of their growth and the quality of life of everyone in our community, EPB is in the process of deploying additional smart city infrastructure, which increases the reliability and resiliency of the services we provide while beginning to establish a measure of local energy independence through locally generated power and storage. After a thorough review of this plan, we have determined that it ultimately preserves and strengthens the things that we love about this city, while it prepares us for the future, a future that is healthier, safer, and more prosperous for everyone in our city. The city's plan builds on an established track record of pursuing thoughtful opportunities for development and job growth. We support these goals in alignment with our own mission to increase the quality of life for this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nick Wilkinson. I'm CEO of the Tivoli Theater Foundation and I'm proud to be here tonight to say that I fully support this plan, but really more than that.
What district, Nick? What district are you in?
399 McCauley Avenue, 37402, District 3.
District 3 is your resident? Okay, thank you.
So, but to backtrack, so I'm in support of this plan. I think it's great. I think it really is in line with so much of who Chattanooga has been, but I'm really here to support Chattanooga and who we can become and who we need to continue to become. And so as we think through the innovative and exciting tools that we need to bring to bear to do a full restoration and redevelopment of the Tivoli Theater, so much of what this climate action plan is going to make happen will help us do that. Not only that, I can also put on, I think some of these council members remember, when I used to be the Director of the Office of Economic Development and we created thousands and thousands of jobs, this climate action plan will do a lot to bring economic development, will create good livable jobs for our community, and will really kind of cement us as one of the most sustainable, I think, forward-thinking cities in the country. So we're happy to propose it. I have to run. We've got Buddy Guy at Memorial Auditorium. If you haven't bought your tickets yet, please come on out, but I'll leave it with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Hi, my name is Jim Johnson, District 2, 1638 Berkeley Circle here in Chattanooga. No special affiliations, just an interested, concerned citizen. And I'm very much in favor of the climate action plan. I don't think I'm actually being overly dramatic when I say that the execution of this plan has the strong potential of being one of the most positively impactful and lasting legacies of this council and of this mayor. And it's really sort of a perfect storm as well. Have a lot of people in favor of it. On the council, I have a mayor who's in favor of it. We have a regional planning agency that has what I feel is a very strong and positive sense of direction. This federal funding that's available that may never be available again. So it's sort of a perfect storm of opportunities. When I first moved here about 23 years ago, you know, a real popular expression was, it's the Chattanooga Way. And I heard it again and again, whether it was about the aquarium, Riverwalk, water pollution, air pollution. Chattanoogaans came together to make things happen, to improve life for the community. In recent years, I've heard that the Chattanooga Way has taken on negative connotations, in part because some of the city's most high-profile accomplishments did not benefit everyone equally and were in fact exclusionary in some cases. And that's another reason why this plan excites me, because I think it really focuses on equity and I think it's going to transform back in a good way to what we have meant by the Chattanooga Way. And I think it's something that in the future, we're going to look back at this as a pivotal moment in the city's history. Thank you.
Glinda Papu, I actually live in Hamilton County, not in the city, but I do go to church here and attend many functions here in the city. In 2019, Chattanooga under Mayor Andy Burke signed up with the World Economic Forum, G20 Global Smart Cities Alliance, to become one of the first 36 worldwide cities to become a smart surveillance, monitoring, analysis, reporting, technology city. Just in Chattanooga, just type in Chattanooga on the WEF website. For the past four years, Chattanooga has been operating under the regulations of a world organization. Where is the consent of the governed? The plan is packed with administrative power overreach without the consent of the people. On page 10 of the climate action plan, which is based solely on political theory, not true science, it states, Mayor Littlefield, in 2012, issued an executive order to identify additional goals pursuant to his signing of the U.S. Conference of the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement and his appointment of a 14-member Green Commission in 2017. Where is the consent of the people? Furthermore, Andy Burke signed on to the U.S. Department of Energy's Better Building Challenge, which sounds like a communist motto, build back better, committing to the city to reduce its energy use intensity a minimum of 20% by 2025, and our population is grown by 14%. How is that possible? We are partnering with and are responsible to report back to an unconstitutional federal government bureaucratic organization that has no accountability to voters or the taxpayers. Where is the consent of the people who is paying for this? We know the federal government has funded much of the installation of the cameras in Chattanooga. Every dime coming from DC has strings attached. Who really is in charge of our city and our county? DC? World Economic Forum? It certainly is not the taxpayers, we the people. This plan must be put on a referendum for all Hamilton County to intelligently make a decision on whether to move forward with this global one-world plan that will eventually enslave us into a digital concentration camp.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Collier and I'm a builder. I'm a developer. I'm a businessman. I have the great honor of chairing our Hamilton County Chattanooga Regional Planning Commission. I serve on multiple nonprofits and I'm a resident of District 1. I've had the opportunity to review the plan and I'm a builder, developer, and a planner, telling you, I think the plan is a fantastic idea. I own a company that builds houses and develops land and, you know, our company really got its start doing green building. We built Chattanooga's first lead platinum houses. We built Chattanooga's first lead platinum commercial projects. We were building earthcraft developments. We got all sorts of state and national recognition for redevelopment of brownfields. And, you know, sometimes people will ask me why we do what we do and I tell them it's because I think my job here on this planet is to truly care for my neighbor. Randy said earlier that her dad taught her how to love her neighbor as herself. And I think that as a builder and developer, I have the capacity to do that through how I do what I do. And so from the very beginning, we have taken, you know, the environment seriously. And I think this plan is our city doing the same thing that my business has chosen to do, which is just good business sense. It's how we remain relevant. It's how we love our neighbor as ourself. It's how we truly care for the environment and the people around us is to put a plan like this in place. And so I'm in full support of the mayor's plan. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rick Walser. I'm in District 4. My wife and I moved from Long Beach, California to Chattanooga last June and are still learning about the city. I reviewed the climate action plan and learned this climate initiative has never been voted on by the citizens. 2006, Mayor Littlefield signed U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement. No vote by the citizens. 2012, Littlefield signed an executive order. No vote by the citizens. 2015, Mayor Burke signed on to the U.S. DOE Better Buildings Challenge. Again, no vote by the citizens. 2019, Chattanooga Greenspace has prepared an integrated community sustainability plan with the input from 100 people. We have a population of 181,000. How were the 100 chosen? How can 100 unelected people represent 181,000? Also, the plan was funded by the Candida Fund, who does not support the Second Amendment. Funding always has strings attached. Again, no vote by the citizens. 2020, the regional resilience report was prepared, input from Chattanooga leaders, stakeholders, and surrounding jurisdictions. Again, no vote by the citizens. 2023, Mayor Kelly is now transitioning to the U.S. DOE Better Climate Challenge. Again, no vote by the citizens. Today, we are providing our comments before you vote next week. Again, no vote by the citizens. Why are there no town halls with our council members? Why only limited comments the week before you vote? Well, our comments- Will our comments be incorporated into this plan? I urge you to place this on the ballot for the voters to decide if this is what we want. You do not have to approve this plan.
As you heard from my husband, my name is Harriet Reed, and I just moved here also from California.
Ma'am, can I? I apologize.
Harriet Reed, 4th District. My former state of California is really big on alternative energy sources. I'm sure this is due to the fact that the government there believes in the religion of global warming, or the climate change, or whatever they're calling it now, since they could improve the global warming. But, so we have an unproven problem called climate change with an unproven solution called alternative energy that will supposedly decrease our carbon footprint. I'd like to share with you and other Chattanoogaans about how that's worked in California. We have utility companies that use maintenance budgets to put up windmills and solar panels instead of ensuring their infrastructure was safe and efficient. The result was forest fires, where people lost their homes and businesses. The windmills are not only incredibly ugly, half of them don't actually turn. They're very effective at killing birds, not so great with keeping up with the energy needs of the state. We have energy alerts that tell the electric vehicle owners not to charge them because it's a strain on the electrical grid. We have brownouts up and down the state that cuts your power off for hours at a time, even if you're in the desert and it's 120 degrees. Also, alternative energy is made from fossil fuels, and the disposal of it is not earth-friendly, if that's the goal. People in my former neighborhood in Long Beach, which is southern California, had heating bills this winter that averaged between $400 and $800, some higher. I'm sure you mean well, but I think every citizen here should be educated on what this climate action plan is, how it leads to the next step of a smart city, and then vote on it, maybe in the 2024 election. I don't understand why we're introducing all this diversity and equity into a climate plan. Does it rain more where minorities live? Why are minorities more affected by climate change? Is it like the bit where California didn't have voter ID and we couldn't use voter ID?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, I just wanted to bring a point of order. We understand that people are passionate about this topic, and that's fine, because we're all passionate about something. But as people are speaking, we ask that you, if you can, please refrain from clapping, because we are listening, and we want to hear you, but it's hard to hear when, in the middle of a sentence, someone is clapping or someone is yelling, and you want your voice to be heard. That's why you're here. So if you're here, you want your voice heard. Please, if you're out in the audience, please give people the respect they deserve, and let them finish their statements without a lot of clapping and hollering, because we can't hear here. This isn't a forum, this isn't time for, I'm not taking any questions or anything about it. I'm just saying, if someone's up here speaking, let us hear them, because we do want to hear you. We do want to hear, because we are elected officials. So we're just asking that if you're in the audience, please give the person at the mic respect, and give us that respect, so we can hear what they have to say, because what they're saying is just as important as what you have to say.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. We're not, sir, you're out.
Point of order.
You're out of order. Thank you.
Did you say something, sir? That's all you said.
All right, you're out of order. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. You have the microphone, and you have the floor.
Okay. Do you want to turn the, okay, there we go.
Yes, ma'am.
Jamie Hall, I am a county resident, but I am in the city quite a bit, and I'm here to speak on behalf of many friends and family who are part of the city. The voices we've heard so far that are in favor of this plan stand to gain business and more money for themselves, or the big businesses that they represent. Your job is to represent the citizens. So, this is a long-term plan. There's no need to rush. Why can't we take our time so you can truly hear from the citizens where we feel you can research more what this plan can lead to, understand it, and what the outcome could possibly be? Going into this, it is my understanding that Chattanooga has chosen or is considering planning next to write out the description of this plan, who has just done something in Knoxville. And here is their, some of the points that they've written out. Provide transportation choices for all citizens. Citizens need to be able to choose between driving, walking, biking, and mass travel. We also need to be able to reduce the length of trips, so that's control. By locating basic shopping and services in or near neighborhoods. We want to, mixed-use development should be located along many transit corridors. Neighborhoods should be pedestrian-oriented, not auto-dependent. Traffic calming measures will discourage excessive speed and heavy traffic volumes, which sounds good, but there's a heaviness to that. More interconnecting streets and fewer cul-de-sacs will minimize travel and reduce air pollution by permitting more trips to be made by foot and on bike. However, cul-de-sacs is what a lot of people with children look for, for safety. One characteristic of sprawl development is that it is unstructured and alternative to recognize that the basic building block of a city, county, or region is the neighborhood. Neighborhoods should be structured into coherent communities and tied together by special districts and corridors. Their examples and principles for these are, neighborhoods should be laid out and convenience in mind, having schools, parks, shopping areas, restaurants, and employment centers nearby. Putting us all in one little box.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Tanya Miller, and I live in the county, not in the city, but I come into the city frequently, and my spouse works in Chattanooga, so we're in a lot. So I think that it affects us as well. I'm here today, I'm glad you all have this up, so I summarize it and everything. I'm hearing a lot of corporations and businesses in support of the CEPB and the other whatever. I don't want to call anybody out by names, but they're all in support of. But I'm against this plan. I think that it needs to be up to the citizens to have a vote on this, to talk about it, get that information out. We're waking up more and more and learning more of what this plan is all about, and I think the citizens really need to have a say. And that goes for the entire county, because it involves us all as part of the metropolitan statistical area. The batteries that you're going to use for the electric vehicles make us dependent on mines in other countries. A lot of the Chinese own a lot of those mines, so those lithium batteries, that's an issue. And I'm also hearing that in a lot of cities that depend on the electric vehicles, you know, the price of electricity is going up. So then they're also limiting the amount of charging, I'm hearing out in California, that they're allowing on their, that just depends, it puts us really dependent on electricity for everything, and when the brownouts happen, there you go, you're not able to go anywhere. So, I love the tourism here, I love all of this, but we don't need to sell out our soul to these big corporations, the federal government, and the World Economic Forum. The World Economic Forum, that has come up with this plan for us, because of the climate change, that we're going to own nothing and be happy, that we're going to eat bugs. I mean, we've seen this before in history, you know, when we've had slave masters. This is something that we have a chance, you all have a chance to say no to this. Put this before the people, let them vote on it. Get the real information out there, the pros and the cons, and let the people decide, but, you know, let them have a voice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Dennis. I'm out of District 7. And there's a war out there in this world since the beginning of time for control of the earth, and has always focused on financial systems, follow the money, and controlling the people. When our state of Tennessee or any state of the union accepts federal funding, there's always strings attached. We are sacrificing our sovereignty. HARPA, DARPA, our Pentagon, CERN, World Economic Forum, CIA, Mossad, and MAS all support new world orders, which include weather weaponization and modification, chemtrails and geoengineering of our skies, and all under the disguise of climate change. These climate change agendas are stepping stones to control people and steal our God-given freedoms from we the people. These agenda items augment the global plan to incorporate 15-minute neighborhoods, smart cities, and the current climate plan. Artificial intelligence, if allowed to continue, will be eliminating the human element. Even your current positions could be jeopardized by AI from a higher authority. Common sense tells us we are heading into a digital concentration camp. Our phones, smart TVs, smart appliances, smart cars, AI-controlled cameras on every street and light pole on every traffic light, every shopping center, and every place of business all have facial recognition and built-in AI monitoring, and it's every aspect of our life. Can you see where the social scoring will come in? These are the internet of things that are shown in the World Economic Forum presentations, all under the cover of public safety. Pfizer's patent 11,107,588-B2 was approved back on August 2021, and it allows contact tracing of vaccinated humans worldwide to be connected to the internet via a quantum link of microwave frequencies from cell towers and satellites, communicating directly to graphene oxide held in our fatty tissue in all the persons that took the shot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That's your time.
That's it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Melanie Mayo. I live at 1817 Rock Bluff Road. It's in the county, not the city. I work in the city, and I'm here tonight on behalf of several organizations involved in local food and agriculture, including the Southeast Tennessee Young Farmers Association and the Chattanooga Food Center, among others. We submitted an email letter of response to the climate action plan to each council member. Tonight, I want to give a synopsis and encourage you to consider adding more goals and actions into Section 5.6 of the climate action plan, and to clearly represent the increasing role that local food production is certain to play during the span of this plan. We would like to see additional language that supports not only urban farms and community gardens within the city limits, but also environmentally sound food production in our region. As we saw during the pandemic, the national food supply chain is more fragile than previously realized, and the local food system is more resistant to these disruptions. Here are a few strategies that would enhance the current climate action plan. Number one, create a food system master plan in partnership with local food organizations, farmers, and community stakeholders. Number two, support a citywide campaign to communicate the benefits of local food. Number three, provide and display consumer resources to help people find locally grown food within the park system and community centers. Number four, incentivize and recognize businesses that source locally grown food, such as restaurants and hospitals. Number five, create a climate sustainability and resilience focus group specific to local food systems. Number six, offer business development opportunities to urban growers on city-leased land. And number seven, ensure farmer infrastructure needs are included in the Main Street Farmers' Market and Montague Park redevelopment plans. Finally, establish a city land bank to encourage farming in urban areas where farmers could apply through an application to grow on our city lands. Thank you for considering our requests.
Good evening, councilpeople. I want to begin by thanking each of you for your commitment to our city and the communities that you are elected to serve. My name is Ally Bugama, and I reside in District 2, Jenny Hills District. I am a nutritional therapy practitioner and a Master of Public Health candidate at the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga with a concentration in chronic disease prevention and control. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the university's MPH program and the Tennessee Public Health Association. We are fully in support of the climate action plan. As noted in Mayor Kelly's One Chattanooga Plan, national research shows that Chattanooga is one of the worst cities in America to grow up poor. Outcomes for families who start behind but are willing to put in the work lag behind our regional peers, similarly sized cities, and even our neighboring counties. The healthiest community in Tennessee, Lookout Mountain, sits just a half mile above Alton Park's neighborhood with the second worst health outcomes in the state. So it's no surprise that closing the gaps in public health is one of the seven goals in Mayor Kelly's One Chattanooga Plan. We believe that this important goal should be directly reflected in the city's climate action plan as well. The American Public Health Association ranks climate change as one of the greatest threats to health America has ever faced, a true public health emergency. Prioritizing public health as a standalone goal provides the opportunity to consolidate existing health-related strategies and actions into one component that highlights the importance of climate on communities' health. To accomplish this, we recommend that the city of Chattanooga add a seventh goal that aligns with associated actions already in the plan. Chattanooga will protect and improve the health of all residents as it relates to climate change. Apply public health principles across strategies and actions of the climate plan. Develop and implement community resilience and response plans for at-risk populations to address flooding and extreme heat, and maintain healthy, affordable, sustainable, equitable, and thriving local food systems. A comprehensive list of our public health recommendations will be available to each of you for further review. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Smith. My address is 8499 Cherry Bark Lane in Udoa. I am speaking tonight as chairperson for the Deconstruction Advisory Board for Chattanooga and Hamilton County. I began forming this board in 2021 because I saw a need, and I knew I could help. We had our first organizational meeting in October of 2022. Now, deconstruction, if you're not familiar with the term, deconstruction is the careful and systematic disassembly of a building to recover the materials for reuse, therefore maximizing their environmental, their economical, and their cultural value back to our community. I moved here in the Chattanooga area in 2019, retiring from working over 30 years in the building industry in Indiana. Because of my long-term commitment to affordable and sustainable housing, in 2010, I took deconstruction training from the Reuse People of America, based out of California. Now, the Deconstruction Advisory Board of Chattanooga and Hamilton County is dedicated to ensuring that Chattanooga has the necessary tools and the necessary education to reach their zero-waste goals in the climate action plan. In consideration of this plan, I ask you to remember that we did not inherit this land that we're sitting on here tonight from our ancestors who boldly and bravely fought for it. We are only borrowing it from our children and our grandchildren. We're borrowing it from the little girl who was born on Broad Street. Now it is your time to be bold and brave, for them and for those who are yet born. The Deconstruction Advisory Board for Chattanooga and Hamilton County is committed to the future generations, and I ask you to share our commitment and support the climate action plan.
Hello, my name is Rachel Campbell, and my family and I live in City District 3, and we own a small subcontracting company here. We heartily support the climate action plan. This is a bold, innovative plan that will reduce our carbon footprint and secure a cleaner environment for our city's future. Chattanooga is a gem, a city where we not only welcome technological innovation and investment, but climate innovation and investment. And we can be proud to have a mayor, a council, and an administration that is willing to put a plan in place to secure environmental justice. We have an opportunity to move away from our past of our history of being the dirtiest city in the South, to secure a city that we can be proud of, and a community that our children and their children can live, work, play, and breathe in. Our beautiful lakes and rivers, our mountains and valleys cannot clean them and care for themselves, so it is up to us. I am proud to have exercised my vote when I voted for my council member and my mayor. And so I urge my city and my community to heartily support this plan, and I urge my neighbors to do the same, to let common sense and good judgment prevail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. I'm Michael Walton, I'm the Executive Director of Greenspaces in District 8. We're a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit with a diverse bipartisan board of directors. Our programming, which has received awards from Governor Haslam and Governor Lee, focuses on empowering people to be more self-sufficient, healthy, and resilient. We do that in under-resourced neighborhoods. We connect at-risk young adults with opportunities in clean industries. We prepare students for jobs of the future, and we help businesses meet their goals to be successful businesses and good stewards of the environment. We are pleased to see that the climate action plan shares our approach of working with a coalition of the willing to improve the quality of life and quality of the environment for everyone in the Chattanooga region. I'm excited about the future the plan lays out, a carbon-neutral future where I have the freedom to generate my own electricity on my property, power my car to get to work, grow fresh food in unpolluted land, drink unpolluted water, breathe unpolluted air, and go hiking and camping with my two boys in a healthy ecosystem. In this future with zero waste, I won't worry about where the next landfill will be built and whether it will be next to my house or business. In this future, because of our planning now, my two boys and kids like them in every neighborhood in Chattanooga will have access to the fastest-growing industries in the world. I don't think it's too much to ask that my two boys and kids all over Chattanooga grow up in a healthy place with access to as good or better natural resources than we do. I support this plan and look forward to supporting the city during its execution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, can I get you just to pause one second, please? Counsel, we did come upon the allotted time that we had discussed. Is there a desire to keep the public hearing open for another 30 minutes?
Yes.
How many people?
I've counted standing up about 30, but we have, I think, do we have a count? Councilman Henderson? Henderson, would you look outside and see in the lobby, can you check it and see how many folks out there?
If you want to be equitable, you've had 11, four, and six against.
That's not how we do that.
I just didn't know if you were keeping count.
Yeah, that's, yeah. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to be heard. Okay. Counsel, do you want, I need to hear a concept. I'm going to propose that we go to 7:30, and that we end the public hearing at 7:30, which should allow ample time for everyone to have their voices heard. Is there any objection to the public hearing going to 7:30? Councilwoman Hill, go ahead.
I wonder, do we have folks here that are not here for the public hearing?
That are what?
That are not here for the public hearing, that are here for the regular business of the council for today. We have some planning items on the agenda. Do we have anybody for that? If everybody's here for this, then... Will you raise your hand if you're not here for the public hearing of the plan? Okay, then I'm good.
Okay.
We're all here for the same thing.
All right. So in the spirit of having your voices heard, which is something we definitely want to ensure, this hearing will end at 7:30. Ma'am, please go ahead.
Okay. My name's Rebecca Day. I live in the county, District One. If you want to know what Chattanooga Climate Action Plan will look like 10 years down the road, look across America. Since smart growth development began in Portland, Oregon, its CO2 reduction and affordable living schemes, the city has gone from an affordable, integrated community to a high-priced city for well-to-do and trust fund babies. Crime has skyrocketed. The poor live in a segregated poverty ring on the outskirts of the city, and former residents hop the green boundary to commute to affordable homes 60 miles away. San Jose's climate smart led to densification, less private property, and soaring home prices. Today, affordable housing in San Jose starts at $600,000 and goes to $750,000. Most public employees can't even afford to live in their own community. In New York, residents were urged to relocate from the Bronx to upscale Westchester County to satisfy HUD's social justice and disparate impact requirements. When people got there, they wanted to go home where they had friends and could afford to live. In Rockford, Illinois, HUD compliance agreements forced officials to advertise in the crime-ridden Chicago to import residents for a housing development bigger than the one the town council voted for. Behind the idealistic climate schemes are stories of crime, displacement, and unfairness, and we have not even begun to address how you will guarantee residents will never be subject to the endless flow of digitally captured personal images and data monitoring, which is against the Constitution, I might say. As the officials in Portland said 10 years ago after their city's smart initiative, quote, "Residents no longer feel like they have power in the community. Their social networks are gone." Quote, "There are people here who wanted to fix up their houses, but they couldn't."
Thank you, Ms. Day.
Hi, my name is Aaron Berry.
One second. I'm sorry.
My timer's clicking.
Yeah, we'll reset it. I promise you, brother. I promise you. You will not be denied. Counsel, Dr. Burz? Dr. Burz, hit your light for me, please.
Gosh, they shut me off, too.
I know. We're trying to.
What can I tell you? How many of you here live in the city? And how many live in the county? Oh, you do live in the county. Okay. All right, good, because I'm really taking notes about the districts and trying to get an idea of the makeup of the group that's here. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. My apologies, sir. Will you put the timer at two minutes? Tyson, thank you. Please go ahead, sir.
My name is Aaron Berry. I'm retired Army Sergeant, military police, four-time combat veteran, also POW mission to Vietnam. Listen, councilmember.
What district do you live in, sir?
District Three, Mr. Ken Smith over here.
Thank you for your service.
He knows exactly who I am. Check this out, ladies and gentlemen. You guys, what I've been witnessing throughout this whole situation is that you have the corporation against the people. Let me explain something to you. The Constitution wasn't written for corporations. It was written for the people. I would behoove you to look at the 2003 situation in Virginia Beach, when they tried to put their high-tech cameras in there. A group of my veterans went to the Supreme Court, and within six to nine months had them removed. I will have these cameras removed. I'm not going to discuss it anymore. I've had enough. We are the people. We voted you in. Did we vote you in, or did the corporations vote you in? You better start listening to us, because we've had enough. This is very surreal and serious. It is a control factor. That's all it is. And we ain't going to be controlled no more. I've been all over this world. I've seen it, and now I'm seeing it here in my own city. I didn't come here to hating peace, to see war. You know exactly what I'm talking about, and I'm not going to go further with it. So let's explain to you this very simple. You need to look these things up that I just mentioned, pray about it, and then exactly ask yourself in the mirror in the morning, why did you take them seats? Because if I took that seat, it's for my brothers and sisters out here, not for who's packing, who's packing my pocket. I've got 15 seconds. Bless your little hearts, every one of you. Because guess what? Every one of you's supposed to be intelligent. What about the people who are outside our city district that work here? Where's their voice? God bless you. Have a good night. It ain't going to work. The city thing is not going to go through. I promise you. Walk for the heart.
Good evening.
My name is Sadie McElrath, and I live in District Five. I am a nurse practitioner, and I work in pediatric primary care. I've lived in Chattanooga for 20 years. And I'm here to testify on the behalf of the children in my care at Livestream Pediatrics who have asthma and allergies. And I'm concerned about the trend of asthma and allergies that I am seeing myself in my office and the connection to climate change. I am seeing year after year, allergy season is coming earlier, and the symptoms are more severe. I have seen so many children in my office just this year that are struggling to breathe. They have so much congestion, inflammation in their lungs, and their parents bring them into my office, and they're worried they're going to stop breathing that night. And what I am seeing in my office is backed up by data. Springs are getting sooner. Falls are lasting longer. Ragweed and many other pollen-producing plants produce more pollen as CO2 levels go up. And that's not even mentioning the direct lung damage that happens due to pollution. I'm seeing it in my office that climate change is happening, and that the people in Chattanooga with asthma and allergies, particularly the children, are already experiencing the effects of climate change. We need to have a strong climate action plan in Chattanooga. Our children need to be able to breathe. In Chattanooga alone, allergy rates in children is skyrocketing. And there's injustice in it, too. In Hamilton County, if you are black, you are seven times more likely to be hospitalized for asthma. And that costs us money. Almost all of my patients, compared to white people, I should say, one asthma visit in the emergency room is $2,000. So we need to prevent that, not just for the suffering, but even financially. People who are Medicaid, if we have healthy air to breathe and they have access to fresh, healthy food, we're going to have less price, less expense for Medicare, and it's going to be a better community. So I'm in support of this plan as a nurse practitioner. Here. Stand up right on this. Say your name. Oh, she wants to see her timer.
And she, and she, and she will.
There you go.
My name is Shalom, and I'm gonna be 35 when it's 2050, when the Climate Action Plan will stop.
Yeah, be incomplete, yeah.
And I think it should be sooner.
Can you tell them what district you're from?
I'm from District Five.
And her name, last name is McElrath.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Axurat, and I live in the East Rainet area, but I do frequently come into the city of Chattanooga. I am a recent refugee from Southern California, and I will not waste your time in recounting the many, many problems and reasons why I left. I chose Chattanooga because I have good friends here. The cost of living and housing and southern charm and Christian virtues and values are all part of the consideration. The weather, well, not quite so much. Shortly after arriving in early 2022, news reports announced Chattanooga as one of two U.S. cities to be testbeds for smart cities. Hmm, what? What does that mean? I asked my friends, I asked my neighbors, and all I got was, what are you talking about? So I started digging in. I found one single document titled Chattanooga Smart City Plan from 2015, and a whole slew of climate change and climate action reports. And now we have the 2023 report detailing for how we will become sustainable and equitable and save the planet and stop Greater Thunbrick from having another teary, nervous breakdown. Mayor Kelly's plan does indeed contain some very concrete and measurable goals to achieve net zero, such as invest and create a robust facility and energy management team, conduct feasibility studies, and many more consultant-created feasibility studies, liberally sprinkled with equity and sustainability buzzwords. But more concerning is that this blueprint appears to be an interim blueprint for the World Economic Forum's smart city, which will in turn turn into the 15-minute city and a digital concentration camp.
Babs Reimer, 4274 Lake Shore Lane, District Three. The World Economic Forum has Chattanooga in their pocket. Yuval Harari is a top advisor for the WEF. He states in a video interview that terrorists only affect a few, but to use climate as a fear factor will affect the world. The WEF has promoted and manipulated that idea for years to achieve their controlling agenda. Climate change cycles are as natural as the seasons, and we are not in a climate crisis. Some of this Climate Action Plan has good aspects, but overall, it looks like a smokescreen to develop Chattanooga into a 15-minute city, which is yet another WEF initiative. A 15-minute city is about housing people in a zone so that everything they need, such as groceries, medical, schoolwork, and hopefully church, is all within a 15-minute walking or cycling distance to create a low-carbon footprint, and the carbon is us. These choices are narrow within a zone, and prices wouldn't have to be particularly competitive. There are test runs of 15-minute cities already, and one is in the town of Oxford in the UK. The town zone is a circle of six pie slices. If you go outside your zone in your car, you must get a permit and are only allowed 100 trips per year, or you will be fined. You can also access another zone by car by way of a ring road around the town. The idea is to have few vehicles inside the circle. Basically, you cannot shop, walk, live without being monitored, which is accomplished by smart city applications like we already have here, cameras, sensors, and many other identity tracking methods. I understand Chattanooga is to have 86 more smart intersections installed by 2025, so there will be a connecting communication network over our whole area. What happens to our privacy and freedoms? We could expand parks and trails as proposed, but don't dictate and confine us in our movements with so-called climate rules. Getting these federal funds to inquire our identity data eventually is not in the people's best interests, and has this 15-minute concept been discussed by the council?
I'm Sandy Kurtz, and I live at 1803 Coward Street, 37409. I'm in the new, the new district, 37408. The new district is District Nine. Well, I came here to support the Climate Action Plan, and I'm just surprised by what I'm hearing from many who are opposed to the plan, and I'm just kind of confused about why they would be against so much of this. And I think it has something to do with fear. They're afraid of losing. And they, and I look at this list here, what's in the Climate Action Plan, and I don't know what there is to really object to, except that these people feel like they didn't have any, any input into it. I am part of the Climate Chattanooga Coalition that is made up of several environmental, local groups, citizens, interested citizens who have participated in this plan and creating it. And I think that it's, it actually is a good plan, and there is plenty of input from many, many citizens here locally. And you had some opportunities, and this public hearing is one of those. So I'm sure that you all are hearing all of the information and talks that can go into it. It is urgent that we do approve it because in the paper today, we read that the climate change is giving us problems that we really need to get on to doing, taking action for. So the best thing that you have in this, I think, is that it says right at the beginning, invest in a circular economy. That is a home run.
Can I, can I pause you one quick second? And I apologize. I should have asked you to do this earlier. Would you please silence your cell phones, if you don't mind? Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmembers, my name is David Hoot. I'm the Chair of the Local Area CR Club Organization. I'm a resident of District Seven, Councilwoman Dotley's. And I'm here to support the plan. We have reviewed it extensively. It has a lot of good science. I kind of wanted to talk about that mostly today, but I think I'm going to shift my message more to the community. What I get from this plan is there is a good sense of caring for the community and trying to tie our community together. And I think we really need that in our society today. And I just want to say to members, maybe the people here today that are opposed to it or have some problems with it, talk to us, you know? Well, we've been looking at it. I'm sure you all have. There's a lot of good backed-up science. I think there's a lot of good logical reasons for a lot of these proposals. So that's my piece. And the other thing I want to mention, just legacy, this whole climate crisis kind of reminds me of almost the World War II effort. I've got 12 veterans going back three generations. We've had three killed in combat. And I get a little choked up about this, but my grandparents fought World War II, and they faced up fascism, which was a worldwide threat back then. And what a legacy. They, they achieved it. They defeated it and achieved it. I think we've got an opportunity now to do the same with the climate crisis. And I don't want that legacy opportunity to pass. So I'm asking you, please, to consider this. Talk with us. We're willing to talk with anybody about it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dean McGann. I'm a U.S. Air Force Gold Star son. I currently reside in the Chattanooga area, up around Saudi Daisy Shell Creek. I'm representing myself, a global citizen, IT engineer, having lived and worked in all over the world, New Zealand, UK, Netherlands, Melbourne, Perth, and Sydney, Australia, Singapore, Shanghai, and Seoul. I have over 30 years real-world experience implementing smart grid infrastructures throughout the planet. Some of the areas that I've done that, engineering, construction, just to name a few, Flor Daniel, Fletcher Challenge, John Brown Engineering, Pectel... Pectel, Arup, and Len Lease. I'm here to tell you that I'm here doing penance for my sins. Just like Greg Juster, a decade or two ago, a member of the Ikle group, I understand, here in Chattanooga. I've seen this horror show before. I've seen management think tanks, Boston Consulting Group, Bain, Booth Allen, McKinsey, many, Number Five accountancies, all conceived great things: globalism, European Union, sustainability. And now here in Chattanooga, we have the Utopian Climate Action Plan, promoting sustainability, climate change, ESG, straight out of Klaus Schwab, megalomaniac lunatics and psychopaths. Bilderberg, Build Back Better, Davos, WF, New World Order, playbook. Another agency-driven, local government entangled in the deep influence of the public-private partnership Quagmire. Net zero and zero trust is zero you and zero me. No amount of enticement, convenience, safety, speed, and comfort should preclude you taking this on.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Johan Denesen. I live in Harrison and my wife and I consider Chattanooga our home. I'm a recent retiree and I am devoting my energy to serving our community and helping specifically to focus on workforce development. I'm a member of Chattanooga 2.0 and I'm also Chairman of CATA. I'm speaking to you today as one of the people and not as a representative of a corporation. Listening to the eloquent and passionate former speakers, I am struck by the tragedy of how concern about the environment, sustainability, and the air that we breathe, the water we drink, and the soil that we cultivate has become so politicized. Because after all, this earth is the one thing that we all have in common, regardless of color or creed or political persuasion. Regardless of whether one believes in climate change or not, it seems to me to be empirically common sense that we would seek to harness technology, good order, new knowledge to bring about the advancement of communities and our society and have a positive environmental impact with a view to sustaining the future for the generations to come. I support this plan because it is comprehensive in nature. It is multifaceted and it's not about whether it rains on poor people or rich people. But in Chattanooga, unless we also have efforts to develop our disadvantaged people, people who are not engaged in the workforce will slow down investment and flatline the growth in our city. This is a comprehensive, well-thought-out plan and deserves support. Thank you.
Dr. Keith Dressler. I live in Udoa, but, Dr. Burrz, I've been paying taxes in Tennessee, in Chattanooga, for 38 years with my office at 6820 Lee Highway. I deserve to talk. I deserve the same respect as if I lived in the city. Why you took that vote was beyond me. But at any rate, it's beyond me why that even mattered. Meaning if we have businesses in the city, we should have a voice. At any rate, because I'm using up my time, I want to talk to you. How many of y'all up there can tell me right now how many EMFs of radiation we're receiving in this room? Any of you? Do you even know what EMF is? Okay, because at the end of the day, we're getting radiated like crazy. It's radiation poisoning. You heard the nurse come up and she's talking about she blames it on climate? It's absolutely not climate. It's increased electrification of the air due to all the 4G, 5G, 3G. Every time the air's been electrified, you see sickness. You see even more sickness and the, and the symptoms? I can't breathe, more asthma. All the things that she talked about was not because of climate change. And it is also because you want, you want to clean up? Then stop spraying the skies. What's coming down is barium and aluminum and you can go and measure that at any ground around Chattanooga, whether it's in the city or county, and the aluminum concentrations are sky-high. So the man who is going to be doing her farming, who I really appreciate, the foods coming out of there are going to be poisoned with barium and aluminum. So I think y'all need to look at all of that before you think about all of this.
Good evening. Dan Meehan, District Seven, Appleson. I've spoken to you before. I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer. I know a thing or two about...
I'm sorry.
I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer. I know a thing or two about intelligence and information and how to evaluate both over the course of 35 years. I've done about 200 hours' worth of research on the climate change topic, which has been hijacked by government. It is not an existential threat. It is a logical fallacy meant to appeal to our motion. And I don't have but two minutes. I'm happy to debate anybody on that aspect, given more time. But as an officer of the court, I'm particularly concerned about the rule of law and government overreach. Your hand on the scales. I'm a global citizen. I've been to 80 foreign countries, most of them socialist. I know who the world polluters are: China, India. I've been to 26 of the 54 countries in Africa. I've lived in Libya for two years. We don't want to lose our capitalist society and every step that you, our government officials, take to move us along the spectrum to socialism, more and more people, sir, are going to be left in poverty. It's the only political capitalist system, economic system, that has lifted more people out of poverty in the last 50 years, 2 billion to be exact, according to the World Bank. You need to step back, let people vote on this, and more importantly, let all these business developers that are looking to make a buck, let corporate people work it out. Government should stay out of this debate and let disruptive companies do it.
Hi, my name is Annalise. I'm from District Two. And I support the climate action plan.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Alan Reed. I live in District Eight. I want to remind everyone in this room that two things can be true at the same time. Of course, we need clean air, clean water, and clean soil. The policies in this plan may help address many of those issues, but the patriots in this room also have valid concerns about the authoritarian nature of the WEF and their policies. Unless your intentions are to catch people littering, what does surveillance have anything to do with the environment? If you want to spend tax dollars to help the environment, spend them on us. Incentivize city residents or county residents by offering tax credits to those who can show positive, meaningful environmental policies or reform in their community. Give us the freedom to achieve these goals without jeopardizing life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little bit of temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. That was Ben Franklin. All that said, we need to have common sense solutions to real-world environmental problems. This climate action plan should be decoupled from the globalist agenda of surveillance and authority.
Good evening. My name is Angela Henry. I'm a current resident in the North Shore. More importantly, I have a business in District Eight. My partners and I started a micro-transit company last year. We do all-electric vehicles in downtown Chattanooga. We're looking to pilot here in other cities as well. But we're looking forward to being part of the solution, as small as that can be, one step at a time and we can start to make some positive change. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kevin Osteen. I'm in District Seven. My name is Kevin Osteen. I'm in District Seven and I have a small construction company here in the city. And I really appreciate being able to be here tonight and hear so many different sides of this, this issue. I'm grateful for that. I am here tonight in support of the plan simply because as, holy cow, the smallest of small businesses here in the city, I feel like there's opportunity here for people and companies that are my size to benefit and grow and to make a better place for themselves here in the city through the efforts of this plan. Thank you very much.
My name is Adam Calabrese. I live on Signal Mountain, but work in District 11 and my son goes to school in District 11. That may diminish my comments here tonight, but this plan is expansive enough to impact all of Hamilton County. So I appreciate your time and thank you for the opportunity to address this body. My one request to this administration and the teams that will be tasked to implement this plan would be to pause to allow time for more research to be done. We can all agree that living in a cleaner environment is an admirable goal, especially after the environmental tragedy in East Palestine, Ohio. But after reading through the city's proposal, it is clear that this plan is linked to an extreme leftist agenda that preaches global catastrophe if the use of fossil fuels are not wholly eliminated. The science on this is highly debatable and there are many subject matter experts such as Alex Epstein, Mark Morano, Michael Schellenberger, Bjorn Lomborg, Richard Lindzen, and Steve Cooney that present contrary data. To build a climate action plan around a radical agenda propagated by globalists that attack the use of fossil fuels will not benefit Chattanoogaans. In your plan, you have stated that monitoring progress will be carried out locally by your CSR team, but also internationally by the Carbon Disclosure Project. The Carbon Disclosure Project works in conjunction with United Nations Climate Change Task Force, who works in conjunction with the World Economic Forum, whose key thought leader Yuval Harari has described humanity as useless eaters. These entities do not have a people-first perspective, but an environment-first mandate. For Chattanooga to put forth an aggressive plan to transition to a low-carbon economy by embracing electric vehicles and at the same time stating on your website, quote, "That every solution in the plan will be implemented through an equity lens so that all Chattanoogaans, regardless of zip code or skin color, experience the benefits of a growing green economy and more sustainable city," end quote, it's entirely hypocritical. You cannot have electrical vehicles without cobalt and you can't have cobalt without the Congo, as they hold half the world's known supply. NPR recently published a documentary called Cobalt Red, which describes how modern-day slavery
Thanks, Adam.
is fueling the electric car industry.
Please scrub equity. Please scrub equity, Tommy.
My name is Ed Howard. I moved here in October from Seattle to get away from the liberal tyranny. I wasn't going to say anything up here tonight because this is all you folks' stuff. I'm 75 years old. I had an heart attack in November of '21. Went to heaven for a few seconds. That doesn't make me any clearer on this, other than it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck. So I'm assuming it's a duck. I was enslaved once in my life is when the U.S. Army drafted me. And I was told in basic training that they owned me and you better believe they owned me. And I don't want anybody else owning me. But I only have a few years, so you folks, one's going to have to worry about the way that plays out. But I don't look at it as being a very good result. And you should check your heart, go to prayer, read the Constitution, United States of America, and see where that is authorized in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zach and I'm a resident of District Five. I've lived here for about 12 years and I want to thank you all for being here and listening to all these comments tonight. Thank you for your time. I just want to focus specifically on the waste aspect of this plan. I'm very much in support of reducing waste and I think everyone here, regardless of our background and our opinions, we can all get behind reducing waste. It's an extremely common sense thing to do. Our landfills in the state of Tennessee are at capacity. If you talk to any state representative, one of the hottest topics on the legislative agenda this year is reducing landfill capacity. It is a crisis. If you all were listening to the news in the last six months, you would know about Bristol, Tennessee, the massive crisis there where landfills, the landfill was literally exploding and it was causing massive crises for people's health there. It was, it was a disaster. Just recently, Athens, Tennessee, is now having some issues. That's, that's in our backyard. I mean, that's not that far away. And we have a choice. We can keep on in creating more landfills, which is going to take up somebody's space. It's going to be next to somebody's, you know, farm or housing development or your house, my house. Landfills cannot be the answer. We can't keep bankrupting our children's future by stuffing our stuff into the ground where it's going to be a problem. We've seen that with the Superfund sites in our community. We, we basically bankrupted our children's future and we're now paying that as taxpayers to have to clean up the mess. I would urge us to think common sense and adopt the city's plan for going zero waste, but 2050 is too long. That's, that is too far away. I'm sorry, but like, we need, we, we, our landfills have problems right now. I would urge us to think about taking action more quickly to reduce waste. Zero waste is not that hard to do. 30% of our trash is due to food waste. We can, we can do this.
I guess, one second. So we're approaching 7:30. The council had decided to hold the public hearing until... So council, if you will allow me, the young lady in the white will be our last speaker for this evening. Thank you.
My name is Madison Rawlings. I work at Green Spaces, but I don't come here today with my Green Spaces hat on. I live in District Two and I come as a constituent of the city of Chattanooga. I'm not here to try and argue your position on climate change, one way or another. It is clearly a very polarizing subject. But there seems to be a lot of conflation in this room on what sustainability actually is. And sustainability is meeting your needs today without compromising your needs for the future. And so that means thinking of a plan. That means having a future. And I don't know if you guys realize this, but all of those things up there, transportation, development, what we do with our planet, what we do with our jobs, that's going to happen whether we plan for it or not. So I don't understand what the issue is with trying to plan for it. I am proud to be a Chattanoogaan. I love living here. I am younger than most of the people in this room and I want to continue to be proud of living here 30, 40, 50 years from now. So I urge you to adopt this plan because your constituents need it.
I'm Tim Gilli. I live at 3411 Centerview Lane. Retired from the Electric Power Board, or I guess appropriately the APB nowadays, now that we're in the fiber and have made us the gig city. But this is a highly explosive issue and there's a lot of people that don't know about it. I didn't find out about this until three days ago. So I guess I'm saying that this is a big burden on y'all, every one of you. I don't remember any of y'all, especially Mr. Kelly, who, if I remember, Mr. Kelly made his money selling big, carbon-producing Cadillacs. Since 1936. And now he's going to tell me that Chattanooga, without a vote, we're going to pass this off on you? That doesn't seem fair to me. It's, all I'm saying is that y'all shouldn't be held responsible for what Mr. Kelly's wanting to do to us. All I'm saying is that when it comes up for election, y'all are going to be held accountable for this and people are nervous about this. People don't understand what is about to go on. Some people's got, you know, this is coming straight from George Soros or the World Economic Forum. You've got all kinds of things coming around. Y'all've got to explain this. If you're going to vote on this, you've got to explain to the people, not just here, across this city. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Gilli, you said...
Hi, yes.
Mr. Gilli, you said Centerview Lane? I'm sorry, I didn't catch your, I'm trying to make good notes here. Where is Centerview?
I live in Tiptona.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Lookout Valley? On the other side of the river?
We know Lookout Valley. We know Lookout Valley. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dawn Ford, president-elect of Tennessee Public Health Association. I've worked in the city of Chattanooga for over 25 years. I live in the county District Two. I'm here to voice support for approval of the new climate action plan for Chattanooga. We appreciate the work of Mayor Kelly, the Sustainability Office, and others in developing this new plan. You might have seen that the United Nations released a climate report just yesterday from its panel of climate experts from around the world, in which they say that humanity is on thin ice. They also state that our world needs climate action on all fronts to reduce greenhouse emissions and adapt to climate change. And if we act now, we can still secure a livable future. Livable meaning that it's a healthy future for people, for all people. TPHA fully supports the six goals outlined in the draft plan. We ask that a seventh goal be added to address health, which aligns with the One Chattanooga Plan to close the gaps in public health. The reason most people are concerned about climate change is because its impacts on people and health, our livelihoods. While the plan addresses health in some ways throughout the plan, we need to ensure that we are taking action to protect people's health. And so, we ask that a specific goal be added. Chattanooga will protect and improve the health of all residents as is related to climate change. We appreciate your consideration of this recommendation.
Thank you. Buddy, I've been doing this, I've been doing this a long ti- Give me a second. Give me, please, give me, give me a second. I appreciate your service, I promise you. You didn't even give me a chance to let this young man into the fold. I've been doing this a while. Thank you. Well, I got it. I see it. I got this, okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate your service. Yes, ma'am. And sir, young man, you will be the last speaker. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, please.
Brittany Henderson, the enclave, District Six. I do live in this city. And I don't know who tells people about climate change, but I'm pretty sure it's not the good Lord above, because he's not sitting up there worried about it. And I just want to challenge each and every one here today to prayerfully, considering not supporting this, because as a missionary, I've traveled to Asia several times. I've seen the systematic workings of the camera systems that they have, and how they can confine people to an area, and what you think is live, work, play today will be, you can only go to this place tomorrow, and you're gonna be there because of a good citizen rating. I've seen it firsthand. I don't want to be confined to an area. I don't want to watch my city be shredded at all. And I just ask you to prayerfully consider what you're doing, because this is not the city I grew up in. This is not the city. You will destroy this city, and this is an absolutely demonic agenda.
Good afternoon, citizens and the members of the city council. My name is Freddie Lee Lindson. I'm 73 years old, and I have a right to speak. And I'm saying to you today that I'm asking the members and the city of Chattanooga. I came here 12 years ago, born in Nashville, Tennessee, and people ask me each and every day, say, "Why do you come here?" After I've been here for a few moments, after those 12 years, my mind began to open up, my ears begin to hear, and I begin to look, listen, and I begin to learn. And what I see is very, very disturbing to me. When I say this to say this, I have a right under Freedom of Information Act, the right to speak. I'm 73 years old, and I'm saying to you that what I see is very disturbing to me, and that you're able to hold information from the public and from the people. And I'm asking you today, I'm requesting a, I'm requesting what you call a schedule of what you have set up as a court hearing. The court hearing for the city council, for the city. They give us a date, if you have that information.
Yeah, I'm gonna let the city, when you mention court, we let the city attorney answer that, because I'm not a lawyer, sir.
Could you answer that question for me now?
Yes, sir, sure can. This is not a court, sir.
And I understand it's not a court, but you're the public council here, and I'm saying to you that you have the information that the public never knew or knew anything about, and this is what's, and my concern is that you're keeping this information from the public.
Sir, that's what you've been allowed to talk this evening, and there have been 39 people, including yourself, to provide information to this body. This body will eventually make a decision in a public meeting, as required by Tennessee law. That's the way it works.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank each and every one of you for bringing your comments, your convictions, and even your passion in the beginning, because everything you said, I promise you, we're making lots of notes. We are listening intently, and this is a very important part of the process. And yes, whether you live in the city, whether you live in the county, your voice matters, and that's something that we strive for and live up to every single meeting. If you, I'd like to see more of you come back and visit us, instead of just about this, it would be nice. The door is always welcome, or open, you're always welcome. So, thank you for your comments. We have concluded the public hearing. I will now end the public hearing, and we will now move into, now, before we do this, there's a lot of folks I probably know that need to go home to husbands, wives, kids, or whatever, and get things done. If you'd like to exit the room, we will recess for five minutes and let you clear the room before we continue on with our agenda for this evening. And thank you for coming. We appreciate it very much. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, if you're going to leave, please do so now. If you're going to have a conversation outside about the public hearing, please do it in the lobby. Well, the light is. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to our agenda. Ordinances on final reading, planning. Oh, we will move the, yeah, well, I'm all out of words. I have a motion to approve the minutes. The minutes will stand without objection. The Order of Business for City Council. Ordinances on final reading, planning items, without objection from council. Items A, B, and C. Madam Clerk, please.
Testing. Item A, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 335 Brown's Ferry Row from R5 Residence Zone to R3 MD Moderate Density Zone. Item B, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 7671 Goodwin Row from R1 Residence Zone to R4 Special Zone, subject to certain conditions. Item C, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 601 South Hossclaw Avenue from UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, pre-830/2022, to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, post-830/2022, subject to certain conditions.
Counsel, we have final reading on planning items A, B, and C. I have a motion to approve. I have a second to that motion. Questions or comments on final read? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Items carry on final reading. Madam Clerk, ordinances, we have no first reads tonight. Resolutions under Council Office. Item A, please.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Adam Cowan to the Salafurt Region Community Advisory Committee for District Nine, with a term beginning on March 22, 2023, and ending on March 22, 2025.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second to that motion. Questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item carries. Under Economic Development, item B and C, Madam Clerk, will take without objection from council.
Item B, a resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Economic Development to apply for and, if awarded, accept emergency solution grant funds from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, THDA, for an approximate amount of $134,375. Item C, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 30674, authorizing the administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to utilize $400,000 in community development block grant, CDPG CARES Fund funding, to provide assistance to eligible landlords with vacant units to complete maintenance and minor repairs, with an increase of $100,000 for a total amount of $500,000.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second to that motion. Questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Items B and C, do carry. Mayor's Office, item D, please.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's reappointment of Beverly Bell to the Form Base Code Committee, for a term beginning on April 1, 2023, and ending on March 31, 2026.
I have a motion to approve. I have several seconds to that motion. Questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item carries. Under Planning, item E, please.
A resolution authorizing administrator of Planning, Chattanooga-Hamilton County Regional Planning Agency, to enter into an agreement with Planning NICS to prepare area plans for the city of Chattanooga in the amount of $1,119,000, with a contingency amount of $119,900, for a total amount not to exceed $1,230,900.
Councilwoman Hill, you have four.
Oh, was that, I just want to double-check that that was, the caption was read correctly, the contingency amount? I have 111,900.
Yes, 111, that's-
101,900. Okay, thank you. I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second to that motion. Questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item carries. Purchases this evening. That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Ms. Satterfield, I believe we have eight purchases and one emergency purchase?
That is correct. Under purchases, we have eight recommended for approval this evening. The first is from the Fleet Management Division of Public Works. This is a change order to the one-time purchase approved by council on January 17, 2023, for two Volkswagen ID.4 electric vehicles from Village VW of Chattanooga, for a total of $99,869. The change order would add $2,311 per vehicle, for a total of $4,622, changing the total cost of the purchase to $104,491. Next, from the Fleet Maintenance, Fleet Management Division of Public Works, this is a one-time purchase of one Isuzu 19,500-pound GVWR cab and chassis, with urban liner 120 roadway painting equipment, for the Transportation Division of Public Works. This purchase is from AB Schmidt North America, doing business as MB Companies, Inc., for a total annual estimated cost of $383,917. This purchase will utilize the Sourcewell contract number 080521-AEB. Next, from Fleet Management Division of Public Works, this is an 8% price increase for Satina products for police SUVs from On Duty Depot, Inc. The increase was submitted at the time of renewal due to the manufacturer's increase in material costs. The new estimated annual spend will be $125,000 for year two. Also, from Fleet of Public Works, this is a new blanket contract for Alamo mower OEM parts and services. This will be a four-year agreement, not to exceed $700,000 per year. The award will go to CMI Equipment, Inc., who is the sole source, authorized dealer in Tennessee, for the Alamo product line. Next, from Street Maintenance Division of Public Works, this is a new blanket contract for the collection and disposal of household hazardous waste. This will be a four-year agreement, not to exceed $85,000 per year. Nine bids were requested, and one was returned. Bid was re-advertised, but no additional bids were received. The award will go to MXI Environmental Services LLC as the best bid for the city of Chattanooga. Next, from Street Maintenance Division of Public Works, this is a, this is the second and final renewal option for washed and crushed stone from Vulcan Materials Company. A 12% price increase was submitted at the time of renewal due to an increase in production costs. The new total estimated annual spend is $850,000. Next, from the Chattanooga Police Department, this is a six-month contract extension for crime scene supplies from National Law Enforcement Supply. This extension is to allow for time to advertise and award a new blanket contract. No money will be added to the contract. And last, from the wastewater department, this is a new blanket contract for liquid sodium hypochlorite. This will be a four-year agreement, not to exceed $6,500,000 per year. Six bids were requested, and one was returned. The invitation was re-advertised, and resulted in no additional bids. The award will go to Olin Corporation.
Counsel, you've heard our purchases for this evening. That's a contract renewal notification on the next page, Dr. Burz. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, they share the same, they share the same color. I do have a motion to approve. I have a second to that motion, and for those of you following for the first time or visiting us online, purchases are set ahead of time for us to ask questions, and again, today at 3:30, we have that opportunity as well. We have a motion on the floor for purchases to be approved. I have a second to that motion. Questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Purchases are approved.
We also have one emergency purchase to report this evening. On behalf of the Chattanooga Police Department, Technology Services requested an emergency purchase, approval for Ademia live scan equipment required for the TBI/TN-CRIM upgrade. The executed agreement, order form, and PO have to be received by Ademia as soon as possible to have Chattanooga placed on the installation list in preparation for the April 14th go-live date.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. That will conclude purchases. Reporting this evening, we'll now move into committee reports. Councilwoman Henderson, we'll start with her, you're in. Councilwoman Hill. Councilwoman Smith. Councilwoman Hester.
We did meet today, today, and thank you.
No worries. Councilwoman Coonrod. Councilwoman Knoll.
Yes, you are. The council will report to us next Tuesday, the 28th.
Thank you. Dr. Burz.
No, I'm sorry, but I do have a follow-up.
Hit your light for me, please. Sorry. Thank you.
So, this is, this is, goes back to the contract renewal on budget. It's the same color page. Can somebody come up to answer?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so, we've got a software for city courts. I want to know the $236,000, it's renewal for how long?
Yes, so, it is the second, a second of three renewals, and- Yes, so, it is the second, second of three renewals, and because there's not a price increase, we don't typically report that here.
I know that, but every year, city court comes up as, as
Got it.
...a discussion. So, when we renew this
Okay.
Tyson, how long is this for?
I think it's three years.
So, it's three years?
Yes, it's, this is the second of three-year renewals, and we renew it annually.
Is it possible that we can be spending money renewing a contract that may look totally different? That's all I'm saying. City court comes up every year, and I'm just
I'm happy to bring city court up here next week, but
I need to talk to city court. This is a business decision.
Yeah, my understanding is that if it's a renewal, the contract terms haven't changed substantially. I, Tyson, do you know any details on this one?
No, I don't know as far as the renewal perspective, but we renew these every, every year. It's kind of standard practice, so nothing has changed since. But I, Hester, you're asking
Are we paying for something that we may not be using to as great an extent? That's all I'm asking.
Sorry, this is used
It's before we approve budget. That's just why I'm asking.
Sure, and my understanding is this is budgeted for, so if
So, it's out of the money they already have?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. May have some more discussion about that. Thank you.
Yep. Dr. Burris?
Yeah.
Back for now. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Committee reports, I believe we left off. Madam Vice Chair?
No report.
Very good. Concludes committee reports for this evening. Recognition of persons wishing to address council is next on our agenda. Anyone wishing to address council this evening, if you would, please move your way to the And while we do so, our city attorney will read our public speaking rules.
Yes, sir. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council. You need to come up front, and you can only be recognized at the microphone that is provided for that purpose. You can't have more than three minutes to speak. At this time, the speaker can address the council only upon matters which are within their legislative and place by judicial authority, and not upon matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies. The speaker cannot use any vulgar or obscene language, nor use toward a personal attack or personal integrity to others, and address your comments to the council as a whole, and not make comments directed towards individual council members. And lastly, the chair shall not permit any disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited under Tennessee law. Someone commits that offense if the person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening to the Chattanooga City Council. Appreciate, I'm Reverend Ann Jones Pierre, current president of the Chattanooga Hamilton County branch of the NAACP. And to clear the record, I'm not an attorney, and I have never made a statement to that effect. We are here tonight, and as the softball team and their coaches, if you please stand, and any members of the NAACP that are still here. We are here tonight to bring attention to the situation that exists in our One Chattanooga. The Little League softball teams that are black inner-city young girls have been removed from the Scenic City League. Only black teams were removed. It is not clear who controls this league and the league's status with the city and the use of city fields. As president of the local NAACP, I made a call on Sunday to the person who is developing schedules and performing other activities to have him disrespectfully terminate the call. An apology is due to the NAACP. After talking to Councilwoman Demetrius Coonrod, we are convinced that the city of Chattanooga has involvement in the league. How can we, as citizens, avoid the issue of trouble in which our young people are involved in if they do not have directed activities? The direct issue is the removal of all black teams from the league with no explanation. The only hint of a reason, and the one that I have been made aware of, is a personal adult issue that has nothing to do with the coaches or the black teams. The city is involved and should be concerned about its young citizens staying out of trouble and becoming productive citizens for the One Chattanooga. Tonight, the coaches, the all-championed team members of the previous year, and supporters are here. We're here to first uncover the discriminatory manner surrounding the ouster of the black teens and get an understanding concerning the outdoor programs and use of city facilities that promotes the inclusion of all youth in Chattanooga. We probably know the saying that an idle mind is the devil's workshop. The coaches, who have collectively more than 120 years' experience, use their personal funds, automobiles, and other resources to give these girls a chance. Therefore, we believe it not robbery for the city to support our youth, those now and those to come. Children are precious, and we are responsible for cutting the diamonds for their perfection. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, Chief of Staff is standing up. I think you know who Joda is.
I think so.
Yeah, he would like to speak with you, outside, obviously. Thank you. So, this is the first that we're hearing of this, and so we take this very seriously and I'll make sure that we'll follow up. Yeah, and I, like you, first I've heard of it too, this evening, so I appreciate you taking the time. Thank you.
Well, my other point, 16 seconds, that's why I thought you should know.
Yes, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Coonrod, my apologies.
Also, thank you, Ms. Ann, for coming. But just to point of clarity, RBI is the city of Chattanooga's league. Scenic City is the county league. So, in our conversation, that was what we discussed, so, and they play with two different teams, so, I mean, I will also suggest that on tomorrow, go to the county commission, because those are the fields that they're using when they're playing. They're county fields, and it's a county league, the Scenic City League is. And Greta, she was supposed to reach out to you and talk to you, but Joda, like he said here
Joda has not reached out to me, but since
I'm saying Greta.
Well, excuse me, Greta. Greta has not reached out to me. And since we are dealing with, most of these kids are inner-city kids, okay? So, I feel like the city council needs to know what's going on. And if the Scenic City League uses any city facilities at all, they cannot discriminate. So, I do know protocol, and I will talk to county commission. But I wanted to make sure these are city citizens, girls, that are being kept out of trouble. They're doing good work. Some of them have gone through the league. They've gotten scholarships for softball in, in college. Some of them on the police force now. Others are doing things just because they stayed off the streets. And that's what we should be concerned about, our citizens. And not people doing things, and I, you know, I really don't know all of the personalities, anything involved, and I don't care. But I have committed to myself, children are precious to me. These kids, these coaches are selling fish sandwiches and everything. In a city with all the money we have, that's, that's gonna stop. But that's just an aside. That's my commitment to them. If you all want to make a commitment, I'm sure they'll be glad to take a check for me.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Ann.
You good, Councilwoman?
But I just wanted to make sure to point out is that our RBI team is not preventing anyone, because I know how sometimes the media will try to change it and switch it up and put their own narrative into it. The city of Chattanooga team is not preventing our young ladies to play. So, I don't, you know, they do a great job, you know, they've been taking names and kicking butts and home runs, which is great, and staying out of trouble. But I don't want anybody to think that it's the RBI team that's preventing them from playing, because that wouldn't be a true statement.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Henderson, I see your light, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Coonrod. I think Scenic City is an association, a league of their own, and to my knowledge, they do not even use city fields. So, I don't think this is in any way tied to the city, or what, or what we do here at the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this subject? Okay. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Reverend Charlotte Shinellen Inzinga Inyaboki Williams, senior pastor of Eastdale Village Community United Methodist Church. I am humbled and grateful to be here with all of you today, and I consider it a complimentary honor to have the opportunity to share my ancestral covenant and voice. I have been unapologetically black and unapologetically a woman. I have been taught that inside the tongues lies the power of life and death. Therefore, as a person of African descent, we must manifest Ubuntu. I am because we are, and we are because I am. So, when we speak, we are not speaking for ourselves. And the minute we open our mouth, we are speaking ancestral power spirit. A thousand voices comes through, therefore, we all speak in tongues. That is power and privilege. My presence here tonight is to remind us, as women of African descent, that we have a herstory of resistance, resilience, and resurrection. So, it is also imperative to know that if we're going to be in the future, that despite our differences, that black women, all of us, must be valued, honored, and respected. This is Women Herstory Month, and therefore, I stand in the spirit of my ancestors, those womenfolk who have taught me how to fight the enemy within and without. I am a part of the DNA of the Wonder Women of the Amazon, General Harriet Tubman, Queen Yah Ashanti Wa, and so many other great women. So, their life was not in vain. Their tears were not in vain. So, we were taught that the world wanted us to walk with our head bowed down, but we were also taught that we are queens without a throne, but never without our crowns. We are the daughters of Aset or the resurrection and grand risings, and therefore, we are the ones that put the missing pieces back together again. We have been scorched thousands of times, but we are like the phoenix birds rising from the ashes. So, black women led the Underground Railroad, the unsung heroes and she-heroes of the women's suffrage, organized freedom riders, as well as so many other things. But what we are not, we are not Bs, and we are not Ws, and you can fill in the blanks. We are the mothers of civilization. We are co-creators with God, and we are sacred. And therefore, the strength of us and our people is love and unity. So, I hope from this point forward, that we never speak to each other or call each other out of our names, that we speak with each other with love and unity, because the cavalry is not coming for us. We are the ones that we have been waiting on, and with the help of God, we have been our own saviors and our own liberators. And therefore, we are the ones that's going to save us, and that being a future that is bright as well as with pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tiffany, Tiffany Rankins. I'm from Lincoln Park. During this Women's Month, I was kind of shocked when I came down here the first of March. I hadn't been down here in a while. I figured it was gonna be the same old thing, just nothing, basically. So, I decided to come at the first of March a few weeks ago, and I was appalled to hear another woman call another woman a B with no apology. We have mothers, we have grandmothers sitting on the city council, and I'm not for sure why that would even come out of your mouth in this area right here, or come out of your mouth, period. We need to respect each other. We need to have respect for one another. We need to represent our constituents if we're gonna represent our constituents. I'm not for sure what's going on down here, but some things need to change. I feel like I'm dealing with a tribal unit when I come down here and speak. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Counsel, I am seeing no one coming to the podium. I have a motion to adjourn. We are